I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that takes us on to presentations. We do have a couple tonight. The first is 1A, which is a community spotlight, recognizing the district winners and runners-up of the city's new virtual home beautification program called Garden Grove Gems.
Okay, and I'm gonna go ahead and start. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is honored to recognize the district winners and runners-up of the city's new home beautification program, Garden Grove Gems. Earlier this evening, the mayor and city council held a reception to meet and congratulate the thirteen winning homeowners from each of our six districts. For over forty years, the city held an annual home beautification program that was paused in recent years to reintroduce a new program based on a virtual format. This year, the city launched a revised home beautification program to recognize local homeowners for their efforts in maintaining gorgeous homes and gardens. In the month of April, Garden Grove homeowners had the opportunity to self-nominate their homes virtually by completing -- excuse me, by completing an online application and submitting a recent photo of their house's exterior. In May, the public voted online for their favorite home from each of the six districts. Tonight, we applaud those winning homeowners. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the Garden Grove Gems winners and runners-up with a certificate of recognition for their best-kept homes and gardens. If I could ask all of our homeowners or honorees to come up, just come right up here and stand in front of the podium. I guess you can all, I know there's a lot of you, but we'll just kind of line up along the front here as best you can. And then, let's see, I might have messed this up a little tiny bit, but let's just, okay, let's see. Let's just all line up, and then what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have you raise your hands when I call you from your district. So let's see if we have everybody here. Okay, so, and I understand the council members have some certificates?
Yeah, we have these.
Okay, perfect.
By district. I'll do that, yeah.
Okay, so what I think what I'm gonna do, since I probably messed this up a tiny bit, I'm gonna say from District One, Bonnie and Shad Padua, and, let's see, they were unable to attend tonight, so I know they're not here, but we wanted to mention them as honoree. And then Patricia Kelly and Dennis Van Sant. Okay, so you're here, so you can let them kind of squeeze through, make just a little opening here. I know, I did a little faux pas here, so we're gonna let, we're gonna let Kelly and Dennis kind of come forward and receive their certificate.
They deliver.
So we're gonna, we're gonna do, we're gonna kind of do this in turn, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think what we're gonna do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just re, I'm gonna reset. I'm gonna hit reset here. Okay, so why don't we have the council members kind of stand behind, because I think we want to do a picture, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have the council members stand behind, and then, and then we're gonna take a picture here and present a certificate. Very nice.
One, two, three. All right, perfect.
Okay, bravo. Okay, so next, from District Two, I'm gonna ask Gloria and Jose Perez, and Charlene and Gerson Cuellar, and Judy and Amando Bento to please come forward. All right, perfect. Now we're gonna take a photo.
Just a little bit this way? There you go, perfect. All right, one, one, two, three. Get one more. One, two, three. Okay.
Okay, and next, from District Three, we have Melanie and Ben Cashman. So from District Three, we have Melanie and Ben Cashman, and Rob Main, and then we also have Bill Slusser and Bob Schroeder. So if all of you can come forward.
Yeah, competition. All right, one, two, three. One more. One, two, one, two, three.
Okay, and next, from District Four, we have Irene Magawa and Mitch Cheerness, and then we also have Chris and Bill Bacuris.
Hello.
Okay.
Back door?
Yeah, back over.
One, two, three. Let me get one more. One, two, three. Perfect.
Okay, and next, from District Five, we have Patrick Sullivan and Gigi Bear, and then we've also got Deanne Soloski, and we have Raquel and Caesar Mata. And finally, from District Six, we have Christina and Steve Lou. Okay, awesome. So congratulations to all of our honorees for making your homes Garden Grove Gems, and have a wonderful rest of the evening.
All righty, now, 1B, public safety update for the upcoming Fourth of July holiday as presented by Police Department and Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council members. I'm gonna talk about the Fourth of July deployment. The Garden Grove, on our end for the Police Department, we will, our detective will be monitoring the illegal sales of fireworks. So we're gonna be on Craigslist, OfferUp, we're gonna be checking, making sure that no sale, illegal sales will be done here in the city of Garden Grove. If there are, we're gonna send our detectives out there undercover and hopefully make arrests for illegal sales of fireworks. At this point, we have twenty-nine fireworks stands that have been approved by the city, and the sales of the fireworks will start between July first and the fourth. The Fire Department personnel will be conducting inspections starting July first between the hours of ten and two. The block parties at this time, we are still approving the final block parties, and we'll probably have the exact count by early next week. However, each block party will be inspected on July fourth by officers to ensure that they are in compliance with the city's ordinance, as of, of course, there is a cost of $136 for each permit. Our enforcement for that evening will consist of two sergeants, one on the east and one on the west, thirty-two officers, which will be actually sixteen two-man officers that will be strictly enforcing firework calls on top of our regular patrol staff that's already about thirty officers already on hand. So we'll have a strong police presence that night. I will be working as well, Fourth of July, so. Poor me, right? The enforcement will consist of any illegal fireworks or any unauthorized fireworks will result in a fine. We have a zero tolerance in our city. We want to make sure that everyone has fun, enjoying the, celebrating the Fourth of July, but at the same time that we're all safe. This includes, not just for the people around, but we also gotta keep in mind for veterans, pets, or other people that might have mental issues that might have problems with the fireworks. So we will keep in mind with that. On top of the officers responding to calls for service when they're not busy, and they will be busy, but we will also be enforcing on our own officers that are not tied with the Fourth of July, making sure that they're, we have safe and sane fireworks and not illegal ones. Obviously, we do not, the city does not allow fireworks in public parks, so on that evening, starting at five o'clock, the parks will close. The sprinklers will be turned on and will saturate the entire field to minimize exposure for people to come out there and try to light fireworks. And of course, we will have officers patrolling the areas to ensure that they're not in there.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, City Manager Stiles and city staff. So for the OCFA during this time, obviously, we've been very busy with press releases because we want to educate the public. We believe education's more important than a lot of efforts we can do, so we want to make sure we get out there with good, accurate information and make sure we're answering the questions that the residents may have. The information's available on the city website. It's also available on the Police Department and OCFA website. We also have created a city fireworks hotline that the residents can access should they have questions as well. So, some of the community services that some of the residents may have seen was, there are park banners that are up now. We have banners across the street, excuse me, across some streets, the digital signboard. You'll see some notes on there about fireworks safety. Social media, obviously, is very big with both our departments and the city. Press releases, and there should be some information with residents' water bills going out. And we also will have some handouts available at the firework stands when those open up. Here's some examples for folks to see if they haven't seen them. Driving around town today, I can say that they are up. They're very easy to see, so hopefully folks are paying attention and we'll have a good Fourth of July. As far as fines, they're gonna be the same as they have been in the city here. Your Police Department does a fine job of enforcing those fines should they be necessary. Again, we believe education is a stronger tool, but sometimes it just takes a fine to get the message across. You'll notice here is a, we have information in several different languages available to the residents, so that is readily available. Some general fire safety tips when dealing with fireworks. We obviously would like to see state fire marshal-approved, safe and sane fireworks be used, and you see there the emblem that you will see on Safe and Sane Fireworks. A general rule of thumb that I like to tell people is if it leaves the ground, it's not safe and sane. Also, we would encourage that adults be the ones lighting the fireworks. I know that's not always possible, but if there can be an adult at least present, that would be preferable. We would obviously like our folks that are using fireworks to look around the area, make sure that they're not around anything combustible, houses, vegetation, ornamental vegetation, anything like that that could start a fire and create an issue. We'd encourage you to avoid those. We'd ask that you gather up the discharged fireworks and either drop them in a bucket of water, or put them in a bucket of, that's got some sand in it, or something that can snuff, snuff that fire out. And obviously, we, just like with the barbecue and barbecue coals, those things stay warm for a while, so we'd ask just keep that away from houses, keep it away from your combustible items, and that'll, that'll help prevent our fires. And with that, I know Chief Deray, myself, and Lieutenant Pan are here, happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Chief Roberts. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Just a quick question. Did the cost of the block party increase this year?
Yes.
It did. Do we find that the block parties are an issue with illegal fireworks more than other situations or other areas in the community?
Good evening. So what we have found is that we have not pinpointed them directly to a lot of the block parties. So in fact, on our last deployment, we didn't have any from the block parties that we would have come and said, "They're done." We have the opportunity to refuse the permits for the block parties. So we have not had any directly related to that. Everything's been compliant there. Now, I'm not saying that people that are attending that haven't. It's just we haven't caught anyone that has, has been lighting them off associated with the permitted block party.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, I have a question. I know every year we keep looking at the hotspot for the illegal fireworks. For this particular year, are we able to be more aggressive on those hotspots, and maybe more regular patrol early and later, so to make sure we, it's more avoidable this time? Or, I don't know.
So we issue roughly somewhere around seventy citations. That, that's a lot. We are not, I'm gonna be quite honest with you, we cannot solve the legal firework problem in this city. And if anyone thinks that we can do that, we, we just can't. We don't have the manpower. We don't have, have the tools, the proper tools for that. I can tell you that seventy-one is a lot. I can tell you that our calls stack starting around four o'clock, and what I mean by stacking is you'll have fifty, sixty calls in there. The majority that, sometimes we don't even get a chance to get to those because of the self-initiated activity. So the officers leave in one location, they're issuing a citation, as they're moving on to the next, whether they are going to a call for service, they're witnessing another illegal act. And so this goes on throughout the night. We see it typically taper off. Somewhere around midnight, one o'clock in the morning, we do have the stragglers, three in the morning, four in the morning, you know. But we try to do our best, and, and for us, I can only deploy so many. I have, Fourth of July is on a Monday. I have detectives that handle caseloads that work Tuesday. I have patrol contingent that works adjacent to this shift, so I can't have numerous officers working twenty-four-hour shifts for fireworks. We are going to, what we are gonna try to do this time is we're gonna try to get our patrol officers, while they're not handling calls for service, to, to deal with some of this. Now, I don't want them to get caught up, the ones that are gonna be handling emergency calls for service inside of our community, to get caught up on fireworks when they need to go to a domestic violence or some other call that takes priority. As far as the data, yes, we do track the data. We do shift around. There are certain districts, there are certain, certain beats. For us, we go by beats that are very, very, very active, so we put more officers there. We will also, I know that sometimes typically we have issues at some of our vacant parking lots, and we see a lot of those with the street racers right now coming in that we have to deal with. So we have to get out there and probably put barricades up because we typically get residents from other cities that come in and light their fireworks in, in our city. So we'll try to head some of that off. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I just wanted to mention this. This is kind of more of like a marketing tool or something else we could think about for maybe the following year, something that could be put either in the City Works leaflet that goes in the water bill, or maybe, maybe some signage. But the city of Lakewood kind of uses the angle of the missing pets. So they have a sign that says, "More pets go missing July fourth than any other day. Do not use illegal fireworks." It's kind of got a sad dog on the front of it. It's kind of, you know, a little bit of an added guilt trip perhaps. But I can, I can show you guys the signage, and I think it might be, just since we have our animal care and we know, we hear a lot about animals missing that day, it might be another good marketing tool, just to say, "Hey, don't use illegal fireworks. It affects more than just the people. It's the animals too in our community." So, thank you.
And we will come back, we will come back with council with data to provide to you with the number of Garden Grove residents that we cite and the number of non-residents. It tends to lean the number of non-residents, but that bounces back and forth. And then we also have individuals that will take up a collection to pay for the thousand-dollar ticket. So sometimes we go to the same spot twice in a night and issue two thousand-dollar tickets. So we do not stop with one citation throughout the night. If we have multiple violations, we'll issue multiple, and if the problem continues, there's something in the penal code that we could probably enforce that will get you booked into jail.
Just one last quick question. My question was for animal care services. Will there be someone working that evening, and how late will they be working?
That I do not have the answer to, but I can get you that. I can get council that answer for you. I will talk to the director and see if someone is working and pass that along to you.
And if we can get information for how many calls we get for animal care services, that would be great too, so if we could pass that along, I'm sure.
I will pass that along.
Just because I know some of the frustrations you have is when a pet goes missing and they're trying to find someone to help them. They call animal services and there's a lag, and I understand we only have, what, two, two-point-five animal care services folks working? So I'm just curious what that's gonna look like on the Fourth of July.
We will get those answers and follow up with council.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else? All right. Looking forward to very fun and festive Fourth of July holiday. Hopefully, we don't have any problems, and just deep appreciation for all our public safety personnel that has to work that night. Thank you. We will now go to oral communications. We do have half a dozen cards, starting with Anna Parker. Please come forward, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Good evening. It was awesome to be here this day to see everybody celebrating, and I wish I could be here for that too, but I'm here to inform you of horrifying thing that's happening to us. After they changed the law that you can build four feet distant, our house is at a great neighborhood, District Two, that has a quarter-acre lot. So we are just about twenty feet from each other. We have totally privacy, no neighbors bothering us, but then this new, and then we were lucky that we have, we are in the house since nineteen fifty-five, but the neighbors, we had a crooked line, so it's a diagonal line, and the neighbors were the second and the third one to live in the street. So they never cared for it. They just treated us parallel, so we have the ivy since that nineteen seventies, while they were ninety-five years old and they died. So the new neighbors just bought the house, and when we saw they started to build this thing four feet from the, from the wall. No wall, no privacy. They started building. The first thing that they put up, I told them, "This is wrong. Let's stop." I sent them citizen dis- letters and orders. They just ignored, and they started building as fast as they can. We go to the city, and then like, we are not at a certain corner, we are not four feet, we're four, three-point-seven, and then we have the planter. At the city, they'll tell us, "You put down your house," and you put down the planter that are there since nineteen fifty-five. So the city said, "It's a civil matter. We are trying to sue them." They disappear. They don't want to deal with us. They ignore us, and they are building there, but nobody in the neighborhood has that style of house, and according to the law, you should be according to the neighborhood. So it's, it's the only house on the street that is crooked, and like, I am handicapped. I have to have the wheelchair. Then, at one certain corner, I have one foot there, so we need to build a wall there. They left no room to build a wall. Then they have windows. They're all at different levels and different sizes. They just put windows wherever they want. They're all different. One is here, the other one is here, and then they're right inside our office and bedroom. We have absolute no privacy. It's like they're stalking us. They look at us with mean looks. We are afraid of them. And then I put notes, and they call the police. They make fake police reports, so it's been horrifying. Since October, we are going through this, and considering the similarity of the neighborhood, this is the only house on District Two that this is happening. The house started to say, "Why did the city let this happen? How could the city let this happen?" And the city's approved four-point-three, and it's built three-point-nine. Why don't, doesn't the city stop it? You know, please stop it, because we are using a certain, a certain line since nineteen fifty-five, and now they just want to take that out, and they are building too close to us, and they're just going on top of us. And they're building two rentals. The two rentals, from my bed, I see their front doors, two air conditioners right there, four feet. So every other house has ten feet distance. These are the only ones. Look at this. If I have four feet here, they have one foot to, to get in. It's not possible. The way it's built, it's not possible. It's not possible. And I've been asking them to stop. They don't. I've been informing the city. They don't. So as we pray here, I ask you for wisdom and courage to do what is wrong, what is, what is not wrong, because it's depreciating our house value. It's sad to see they have ten windows right there facing us, four feet from us. We have absolute no way to have any silence. Every renter, two rentals there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Everybody that they're gonna go in there, we are gonna be listening from our bed. So please have wisdom and courage to do the right thing. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Tom Raiber.
Hi, I'm Tom Raiber. Today, June fourteenth, is our American Flag Day. Today, June fourteenth, is our forty-fifth President Donald J. Trump's birthday. Happy birthday, Mr. President. What is nine dot eighteen dot one fifty dot zero one zero? In a office, commercial or industrial, every five thousand square feet, a three cubic yard bin is needed. Why is it on May twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two, I again email the mayor, city manager, two assistant city managers, the city clerk, and the IT that silence is the only thing I heard besides the crickets? To be clear, I did call and talked with both the city clerk and IT. You see, there is no citizens- You see, there is no citizens' request for this. Plus, the new citizens' request, you are limited to 500 characters. I was asked by the city clerk to email her. I did, and I added the names above I just said, and still no reply. You work for we, the people, and not the other way. I had to email the property management for the commercial property next to where I live because the landscaping was not done for five weeks. She had a new landscaper come and thanked me. On Saturday, I text Bill Murray that the flood canal gate was open and the chain and lock was missing. He corrected that in less than an hour, and Bill Murray thanked me. Why is this temporary we, the people, city hall by appointments only? Is there going to be a case, when the remodeling is done, that we hear we, the people, will not have access to the city hall manager, city clerk, and anybody else on the second and third floor? And are we going to have to have appointments only? Lastly, what happened in Garden Grove on June 21st, 1965, with Jenny Hill? Why is there Plexiglas here, since the guy's still got time? Why is there Plexiglas here? You still don't watch through there? You guys have to go ahead and stop this. And you guys all need to go ahead and look at your emails. And what is this 9.18.150.010 going to be corrected?
All right, thank you.
Call me.
Bill Church.
Mr. Mayor, council members.
Good evening, sir.
I'm a 20-year resident of Garden Grove, homeowner. We were planning on building an ADU for my daughter and her husband to the rear of our house. I have a rather large, good old Garden Grove lot. We submitted the plans in February, I didn't hear anything. We finally called the city, said, "Oh, you have code violations." Had an inspector come out, not the friendliest person I'd ever had to deal with. To make a long story short, I was accused of having somebody living in my garage. I did put an air conditioner, it was a playroom, a TV room. And living there for 20 years, I never spent one night in that garage. Nobody lived in that garage. Strictly a room, I do a little picture framing, have a table in there for that. Had him come out, the person, this is all going to come out. That was her, the code inspector's take on this. Demanded that she inspect my entire house. I graciously let her, let the code inspector come in. To make a long story short, she nitpicked us for stuff that was done to my house before we even bought it. I have paid for and got all the permits to fix everything that has been requested of me. One thing, I have a stand of nine tall majestic cypress trees, Italian cypress trees in front of my house. I'm told that they have to be cut to three feet tall. Why? You can look out this window here and see tall majestic Italian cypress trees. There's thousands of them in Garden Grove. Within a mile of this building here, there are, I'm told that they're too close to the street. They're in the public right of way. May I show you this fixture, folks? May I step in and show you this fixture? They're well maintained. The tree department was out to my house and said, "We don't see any problem with this, Bill." I've spent a lot of money on these trees, the 20 years that I've lived there. To cut them to three feet tall is going to be an emotional detachment for our family. It's going to devalue my property, it's going to be an eyesore, they will die. Have you ever seen a three-foot tall Italian cypress tree? The trunk on these trees are 10 to 12 inches thick. To cut them to three feet is ridiculous. I need relief. I can't cut my trees. We can't build the ADU because code enforcement won't release my plans with planning until I cut the trees to three feet. Please, folks, I need to save my trees. There's no reason to cut these trees to three feet. There are thousands of these trees in Garden Grove. These trees are not in the way of anybody. They provide us a level of privacy. There's a gentleman that lives, okay, talking about people living in garages, and I'll be quick, I know my time is about up. There are three houses on my block that house people in the garages. I'm not going to turn anybody in. One of those people have so many vehicles that sometimes I get an old beat-up metal recycling truck that parks his car dead in front of my house for the whole weekend. I cut my trees to three feet, I'm going to have to stare at that truck. Please, help me.
Thank, thank you for coming, sir. And we will follow up with you individually on this.
Thank you, please help me save my trees, guys. Come on, honey. Thank you. Thank you.
Well done, sir. Jacob Breedlove. What's that? Can't top that? I understand. Oh. I'm sorry, these are both for 5C, so that's that for, that's for an actual item? Is that why?
It's under items for consideration.
Okay. Mark Collinsworth? Okay, gotcha, I'll set you aside for a minute. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? I don't have any more cards. All right, thank you. We will close oral communications. We're going to recess briefly to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Bridegum?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Member Klumpenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Buie is absent, and Chair Jones.
Here. All right, we already did oral communications. Consent items, just receive and follow the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, anyone up, roll call vote. There we go.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you, any matters? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council. We'll reconvene, that takes us on to consent items. It's recommended that items 3A through 3P be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Any requests to pull, or can I get a motion for the whole balance?
I motion it.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All righty, moving right along. Public hearings, we do have two listed tonight. Item 4A.
Item 4A is adoption of a resolution for the annual levy of fiscal year 2022-23 assessment for the downtown assessment district. And Mr. Smouse is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mayor Jones, members of the city council. Tonight, we have the final step in establishing the annual assessment for the downtown assessment district for fiscal year 2223. The assessment remains the same from the previous year. In accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the remaining action for the city council is to hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution confirming the assessment for the district. Should the resolution pass, all information will be forwarded to the county assessor for the collection of the assessments. This concludes my report, and staff is available for answer, for, to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions to start? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we're going to... Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, madam clerk?
At this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, June 14th, 2022, the city clerk's office received a total of zero protests. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. There are 28 parcels in the downtown assessment district. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest.
Thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing. Colleagues, can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. Similarly, item 4B.
Item 4B is adoption of resolutions confirming the annual levy of fiscal year 2022-23 assessments for the Garden Grove Street Lighting District, the Garden Grove Street Lighting District Number 991, and the Garden Grove Park Maintenance District. And again, Mr. Smouse is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy again. Mayor Jones, member of the city councils, or city council. Tonight, the city council is asked to hold a public hearing for the city's street lighting and park ma- park maintenance districts and to adopt resolutions of the co- collection of the assessments for those districts. The public hearings are required by law, and their purpose is to hear testimony on the matter of the annual assessments. Once the hearings are completed, the resolutions may be adopted. Should the resolutions pass, the required information, required information will be forwarded to the county assessor for the collection of the assessments. The assessments will raise approximately $1.3 million in the street, in streetlight revenue, and $700,000 in the park maintenance revenue. There are no increases in the assessment rates from last fiscal year. We do this annually. This concludes my report, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, colleagues? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on item 4B? Seeing none, madam clerk?
At this time, I would, Honorable Mayor and city council members, at this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, June 14th, 2022, the city clerk's office received a total of zero protests. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. There are 349 parcels in District 991. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest. I would also like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, June 14th, 2022, the city clerk's office received a total of zero protests. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. There are 35,722 parcels in the city's park maintenance district. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest. And finally, at this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. As of 5:30 PM Tuesday, June 14th, 2022, the city clerk's office received a total of zero protests. Since 5:30 PM, no additional protests were received. There are 37,684 parcels in the Garden Grove Street Lighting District. As a result, there has not been a submittal of a majority protest.
Thank you. All right, we will go ahead and close the public hearing, colleagues. Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Thank you. Call the vote, madam clerk?
Motion received, six yes votes.
All right, thank you. That takes us on to items for consideration. We do have several listed for tonight, starting with 5A.
5A is introduction and first reading of an ordinance to adopt the paramedic tax override rate for fiscal year 2022-23. And that ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Establishing the Amount of Money for Paramedic Services That Must Be Raised by an Adveraler of Tax Override in the Setting of the Tax Rate of Said Override." And Ms. Song is here to give the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. The item before you is an ordinance authorizing a tax override of eight cents per $100 of assessed valuation of the city properties located in the city limits. This override tax was originally approved by the Garden Grove residents in 1974. It is designated to help fund the ongoing costs of paramedic services provided to the community. The 1974 ballot measure set a limit to this tax at 10 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. The proposed rate for fiscal year 2223 remained the same at eight cents, and this rate has not been changed since 2017. The tax is necessary to maintain a paramedic services, which is currently provided through the Orange County Fire Authority. We estimate the paramedic tax revenue for fiscal year 2223 will be about 14 and a half million. In order to levy this tax, state courts require the city council to set the annual levy by ordinance or resolution. We therefore recommend that the city council introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance titled, "Establishing the Amount of Money for Paramedic Services That Must Be Raised by an Adveraler of Tax Override in the Setting of the Tax Rates of the Said Override." This concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Patricia. Any questions, comments? This is just item for consideration, so do we have a motion?
I have a question. Is there, I just wanted to compare the revenue that's taken in times what's actually used. Is there a surplus? Could we lower it? Could we need to raise it? Where, where the 14 and a half, 14 and a half million dollars in revenue, how much do we spend? All of it?
Well, all of it, because the service is provided by the Orange County Fire Authority, and they do not have a breakdown of each component, how many is responding to fire, how many is responding to paramedic calls. So that amount is contributing towards a contractual obligation with OCFA.
Right.
And the current year, yeah, that is correct, yes.
That whole situation. Okay, thank you.
I'll move it.
Thank you. All righty, call the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. Item 5B.
Item 5B is approval of a memorandum of understanding with the city of Fountain Valley and the city of Westminster to explore advancement of a future navigation center. And Ms. Kim is here to give the report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you switch to the PowerPoint? Thank you so much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, I will be highlighting an introduction of a request of council to approve a memorandum of understanding with the cities of Fountain Valley and Westminster. At our last update in April, I provided some information relating to homeless resources. And at that time, we also noted that our goal was to implement, continue implementation of our comprehensive strategic plan to address homelessness, of which one of those goals was to identify a navigation center. Also wanted to use this opportunity to provide a little bit of highlight of, in terms of actual and current homeless resources that are currently in place in addition to forward-thinking programming to advance additional resources. This is just a recap of some of the, of the programs that we have in place. Attached to your staff report is a summary of all the implementation items that we've accomplished so far. As you will note, in 20, in 2019, the point in time count was approximately 225 homeless individuals in the city of Garden Grove. From 2019 through 2021, we've implemented quite a bit of programming, including implementation of a tenant-based rental assistance for at-risk individuals dubbed HART. We received during the COVID period approximately $4.2 million of ESG funding, and that was used toward, towards homeless prevention activities. We've also supported the Garden Grove Special Resources Team. We also developed our website, our data dashboard, and conducted extensive amount of workshops and community engagement webinars. We've also received the most recent Orange County Point in Time Count, which concluded the Garden Grove homeless count is approximately 391 individuals. Today, we'll be recommending council support to continue identifying a potential location for a navigation center. This slide may look very familiar to the council. I've shared it on many occasions. It's just a snapshot of our website. It's updated quarterly and just highlights where our resources are provided and who we serve and where those dollars are allocated. And just to give you an update, from July 1 through March of this year, we've served and provided resources to approximately 800, 8,856 individuals. Also, there is the website located on the bottom of that slide. A little bit about the Orange County. From a regional perspective, the county of Orange is broken up into three geographic areas to coordinate homeless resources and efforts throughout the county. The service planning areas are comprised of north, south, and central. For Garden Grove, we are located in the central spawn, and we're com- For Garden Grove, we are located in the Central SPAR, and we're comprised of nine cities and portions of county unincorporated areas. The item before you this evening is to consider a memorandum of understanding with the cities of Fountain Valley and Westminster. As you'll note, Fountain Valley and Westminster are part of the Central SPAR, and we reached out to those agencies to explore conversations of regional efforts to address homelessness. And so before you is a non-binding MOU. It's just to begin the conversations. It's to work out the logistics relating to funding, construction, operations, in and at which time we are able to identify a location for a navigation center. This slide also may look familiar to you. It identifies an overlay zone in Councilmember Wynn's district in D-6, which provides for an overlay zone to support and permit a navigation center. And for the benefit of the public, a navigation center is a hybrid version or a next generation of a homeless shelter that includes wraparound services. It is not, it is typically all referral-based, and so that is the type of program we are looking to explore. Lastly, this is about a year ago, the city has reached out and collaborated with Orange County United Way. They have a very robust program and education relating to homelessness. It's called United to End Homelessness. And so we are working with them to deliver two additional community engagement resources relating to sharing information about homelessness 101. And the homelessness 101 seminar in July is intended to talk a little bit more about navigation centers, what they typically look like, what services are provided to these individuals, and so that is also planned. At this point in time, there is very, staff is very aggressive in looking for prospective sites. Within the overlay zone, there is very limited real estate that's currently available, so we are expanding our reach outside of the boundary. And so tonight, staff is recommending continuation of that effort via your approval of the MOU. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Any questions, comments, or motion?
I'll make the motion, but I just had a few comments. I just wanted to first thank staff for all the hard work, ranging from folks at City Hall to the Police Department to Public Works for all the hard work that they've been doing. I know for sure, I've been inundating them with several calls, many of them coming from a specific store that's been causing me a lot of migraines. But truth be told, we had a very open, honest, and relatively, you know, not aggressive towards each other, but aggressive on this issue, conversation at the last meeting stating that we need to start looking beyond just my district for a solution to this problem, even if it's temporary until we find one in my district, because I have no doubt that's probably where it's going to go, and I'm fine with it. But we can't wait six months, a year, two years before we get this done. This problem has only gotten a million times worse, and I don't see it getting any better. Now, the majority, I would say about 90% of my calls that I'm getting for residents is somewhat pertaining to the homelessness issue we have here in Garden Grove. So if we need to start looking at other properties and having other conversations about what our options are, then I think we need to aggressively look into that. We no longer can just kind of wait until something falls in our laps, and I know that the Assistant City Manager Lisa Kim has been aggressively looking at properties and making sure as soon as something hits the market, she's available to look into it right away. So I do appreciate that, but I think we need to start looking beyond the scope of just Garden Grove and just beyond commercial properties, looking at churches with big lots, like we stated last time, or other areas that have really large lots that we could utilize base, even if for a temporary basis.
And that was a motion, too, correct?
I second it.
I second it.
All right, thank you. Call the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you. Item five C.
Item five C is award a contract to RJ Noble Company for various rehabilitation 2022 projects. This is an item that was continued from the May 24 city council meeting. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, the city council is being asked to award a contract to RJ Noble Company to rehabilitate various city streets. The streets include Newland Street from Trast to Garden Grove Boulevard, Mays Avenue from Yawkey to Magnolia, Hazard Avenue from Bouchard to Ward, McVadden Avenue from Ward Street to about 600 feet east, and Chapman Avenue from Nelson to Ninth. Finally, Lamson Avenue from Harbor to Hester. Each street will require different rehabilitation techniques, but in general, the rehabilitation work will include full-death reclamation of all failed areas, cold milling of existing pavement and replacement with AC asphalt, repair and upgrade of various concrete work in the public right-of-way, restoration of traffic's signing and striping and pavement markings, and the establishment of centerline ties and monuments. Those are survey markers. All this work is to be completed at a cost of almost $5 million. It should be noted that a portion of Hazard Avenue is in the City of Westminster, and they have agreed to pay their fair share. Staff received and opened four bids on May 11 of this year, and after a legal consultation on some bid irregularities, it was determined and recommended by the city attorney that RJ Noble Company declared the lowest responsible bidder. And those bid irregularities are detailed in your staff report. Should council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in July and should be complete before the end of the year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with Measure M funds, gas tax funds, red light camera fees, and funds from the City of Westminster for their share. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, Bill? Great. Call the vote. Thanks, Bill.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All righty, that takes us to, ordinance was presented for a second reading and adoption. We have one listed, item six A.
Item six A is second reading of ordinance number 2935 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Adopting the Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy pursuant to Government Code 7071."
Colleagues, questions, comments, motion?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Again, I get the law is the law, and we're kind of forced to do this. Every city has to go through this process on these ordinance. But make no mistake, this is something that makes our communities less safe, plain and simple. Putting up what our police department has as its capabilities on a website just enables any would-be ill-intended person to know exactly what they have and what they need to defeat it. And so, you know, again, it's, I know we got to do it. It's kind of forced down our throats, but this is not a good thing. I would urge our state legislature to repeal this as quickly as possible. This is silly. I'll leave it at that.
Do I have a motion for the second reading? Call the vote, please.
Motion received, six yes votes.
All righty, that takes us on to matters. We don't have any listed. Is there anyone? We do have a couple of closed session items we've got to go back and return to for a while, I believe. Any matters from council members going around the room?
I have one. On Sunday, July 10, I know we, this body just passed a new ordinance brought by Councilwoman Tuha Wynn about the catalytic converters. So on July 10, Sunday, I am hosting a free catalytic converter engraving event. It'll be at the Grease Monkey Garage at Chapman and Knott. So, you know, I'll have all the information posted, but it's free to every Garden Grove resident. You will need your driver's license because we need to engrave your driver's license number on your catalytic converter. So if it does show up, the police will have a way to track it and whatnot. So it kind of goes with Councilwoman Wynn's ordinance there. Again, free to all Garden Grove residents, and I believe I just got an email from the PD that they'll have crime prevention folks there to pass out crime prevention information. So again, Sunday, July 10.
Real important, happy birthday to Councilwoman Klaufenstein. Happy birthday. That's it.
Well, happy birthday to my colleagues, Stephanie. Always 21. Well, I also want to share short remarks. Recently, I had a pleasure to congratulating over 40 residents during the 2022 Garden Grove College graduates reception for their achievement in higher education. So every year, I'm very impressed by the caliber of our graduates with a degree ranging from a associate to a doctorate in different areas such as chemistry, pharmacy, and public administration. With the support of generous sponsor, they received nearly $5,000 in opportunity cash, prizes, gift cards, and services to get their career started. The city has held this event since 2013, and it had grown each year, which demonstrate the import of higher education, representing our local workforce now and in the future. So I commend those young men and women representing the best of our community, and wish all of them continued success in their career and future endeavors. So if you want to view the photos of that event, please visit ggcity.org/grads. Congratulations to all the graduates.
Thank you. Thank you. Kim, go ahead.
I have a couple, but I'll try to be quick. First, we are entering summertime, and although I'm really excited and happy about the summer concerts and parks, I am also slightly disappointed that none of them happen to be in District Five or Six. I know that prior to the pandemic, we did have some at the Elks Lodge, and we tried to find other locations, and I did talk to staff, and they did say that there was some low turnout, and so wasn't always like the best viable places to have these events. But historically, these events have never happened on this side of the city, and so to expect huge turnouts on the first or second go is kind of unrealistic, so that I would really encourage my colleagues to help me encourage staff to make these events a little bit more equitable throughout the city. I've had preliminary conversations with school board members about utilizing school parking lots. That's huge spaces, and I feel like we just really need to work on our relationship with the Garden Grove Unified School District and have these events more visible and accessible to our residents, and if that means having them at schools, parking lots, and we need to really invest in that. And if staff's not making any headway with the school district, then you have seven council members, six council members and a mayor here who could lean on their relationships and help make that happen. Next up, we have a lot of trash and debris out on the harbor freeway exits and entrances. And so I know Caltrans hasn't always been the best partner, and we haven't always gotten a quick response, but I would like to urge for us to continue pushing for them to clean up these areas because they're getting out of hand, and trash is now spilling onto the sidewalks and onto the streets, and it's dangerous to drive. Between on harbor from the Great Wolf Lodge to the brand-new Raising Canes that's opening shortly, there are huge massive potholes, and I know we're having a grand opening, and I would hate for people to drive and accidentally crash, because I almost did earlier today while doing a drive-up pickup at Target. So we need to get those fixed soon. Second to last, on this Thursday, the League of California Cities Orange Division is holding its general membership meeting, and I'd like to encourage my council colleagues to attend. We will be having the state CalCities president and first VP in attendance, and it's one of my larger events as president of this OC division, and I've challenged all of my board members to bring at least two reps from their cities. I need to step up, so I need some of you to be available at 5:30 on Thursday at Knott's Hotel. There will be an amazing fried chicken dinner that I've never had before, but I heard amazing things. So please check with Pam and RSVP. I have already forced the city manager and assistant city manager to attend, so I need one, at least one of you. And lastly, happy Father's Day, happy Juneteenth, and happy birthday, Councilmember Klaufenstein.
Thank you.
Birthday, girl.
Yes, I just want to make a few Vector updates. The OC Discovery Cube in Santa Ana is opening a new interactive vector control display at their facility, so I get an opportunity to tour that tomorrow. I'm looking forward to it. It'll be interactive and a great opportunity for kids to learn more about doing their part and ensuring the responsibility of dumping and draining, tipping and tossing that water in the yard and so forth. I know Discovery Cube is a really fun place for families to go, so I think it's very beneficial that OC Vector now has an area there at Discovery Cube. So make sure you head over there if you can this summer with your kids. And then I just wanted to, once again, congratulate the GG Gems recipients. As was stated in the reception earlier, I was a judge in 2016 before I was on the council, and I loved that experience. And then as years went on, and obviously COVID, we kind of had to part ways with that program. And so when talking to staff about bringing it back and revitalizing it and streamlining it, I was really excited to be a part of that and kind of help breathe it back to life, and staff did an amazing job of doing so. And it was just great to see everybody coming together, residents sharing in just that love of their home and their yards, and so I just, again, want to congratulate all the recipients and hope we can keep this going in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
I remember the one thing I forgot. I was hoping, I'd like to transmit to our city traffic engineer, and I understand this is not even in Garden Grove, but it's right there at the border. Garden Grove Boulevard, where it hits into Valley View, I guess the lighting has been changed for the turns, and now we have traffic going all the way back to Knott on Garden Grove Boulevard at times. And it's taken literally an hour to an hour and a half to get off the freeway and go a block. So I know it's Caltrans doing their project there, and it's in the City of Westminster, but it impacts everybody in my district because that's how they get off the freeway to get in there. So I was hoping that our city traffic engineer could please communicate with Caltrans and Westminster and maybe come to some kind of a solution there to fix that problem, and it's been going on for about a week and a half now. Anyway, thank you. Sorry for the.
All righty. City Manager Scott Stiles, anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members. I did just want to let council know that our finance department and our public works department have collaborated to get us signed up for the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program, sponsored by the State Department of Community Services Department. So the program offers a one-time payment to help our residents pay for any past due water or wastewater bills that they have. It's based on income to help pay for overdue bills, which have accrued at any time if you have, if you, you know, have overdue water bills. We're going to be working a little more on the program. We just got signed up. We'll be getting all the publicity out to let people know if they could take advantage of this state program. In the meantime, if residents want to just learn a little more about it, they can go to csd.ca.gov/waterbill, and they can learn more about it. And then when we get our program up and running, they'll see Garden Grove, and they can figure out how to maybe hopefully take advantage if needed. So for services up to $2,000, so could be helpful to some families. So that's all I have. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. General Counsel, anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, we do have two closed sessions to go back into. We have three listed. We finished one, the labor negotiations item, and there's no reportable action out of that item, and we are going to have to adjourn to address the last two items.
Okay, we will now adjourn to closed session at this time, and we'll come back if there's anything to report. Thanks.